The Senate will come to order. Members, today I ask for -- we pause for a moment of reflection, and following that moment of reflection, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Secretary will take the role.
Senators Abler, Anderson, Bach, Benson, Bigum, Carlson, Chamberlain, Champion, Clausen, Coleman, Swazinski, Dames, Dibble, Dornick, Dreheim, Duckworth, Dietzick, Eaton, Icorn, Ekin, Fatae, Franzin, Frantz, Gazelka, Goggin, Herr, Hoffman, Housley, Howe, Ingabretzen, Isaacson, Jazinski, Johnson, Johnson, Stewart, Kent, Kiffmeyer, Klein, Karan, Kunisch, Lang, Latz, Limer, Marty, Matthews, McEwen, Miller, Murphy, Nelson, Newman, Newton, Osmik, Papas, Port, Pratt, Putnam, Rarick, Rest, Rosen, Rude, Senjam, Tomassoni, Torres, Ray, Utke, Weber, Westrom, Uyghur, Wickland.
Pursuant to Rule 14.1, the following members intend to vote under Rule 40.7. Abler, Anderson, Bach, Bigum, Carlson, Chamberlain, Champion, Clausen, Coleman, Swazinski, Dames, Dibble, Dornick, Dreheim, Duckworth, Dietzick, Eaton, Icorn, Ekin, Fatae, Franzin, Frantz, Gazelka, Goggin, Herr, Hoffman, Housley, Howe, Ingabretzen, Isaacson, Jazinski, Johnson, Johnson, Stewart, Kiffmeyer, Klein, Karan, Kunisch, Lang, Latz, Limer, Marty, Matthews, McEwen, Miller, Nelson, Newman, Newton, Osmik, Port, Putnam, Rarick, Rest, Rosen, Rude, Senjam, Tomassoni, Torres, Ray, Utke, Weber, Westrom, Uyghur, and Wickland. The quorum is present.
Next order of business, the Secretary will read executive order and official announcements.
Secretary Ludeman, pursuant to Rule 8.1, all appointments requiring the advice and consent of the Senate that were referred to committees during the meeting of the regular session of the 92nd Legislature and were not finally acted upon by the Senate are returned to the same committees to which they were previously referred. Any appointments returned to a committee not organized pursuant to Senate Resolution Number One are instead referred to the Committee on Rules and Administration. Sincerely, Jeremy R. Miller, President of the Senate.
No action is required. Senator Kent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we adjourn, I wanted to ask, I believe probably Senator Benson, if she can inform the body what the plans are moving forward. I understand we're going to reconvene on Tuesday.
Senator Benson.
Will Senator Benson yield?
Senator Benson will yield.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we will be reconvening on Tuesday. We are in a period of transition, having just ended emergency powers, and the governor does still have some open appointments, and so we need to consider -- for example, I've received an executive order inquiry from my commissioner in the last couple of days, and so we're going to remain vigilant and attentive to the governor's appointments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I know that yesterday, it's hard to believe it was yesterday at 3:00 in the morning when Senator Gazelka said we were coming back today, we were worried, make sure that the tax bill got signed. I got a letter, I know Secretary Ludeman got the letter, that the tax bill was signed. I'm just confused what we're going to be doing, why we need to keep the Senate in special session without the House, in order to -- and what benefit that is to the people of Minnesota.
Senator Benson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Kent, the Senate does have unique responsibilities in appointments, proceedings, and confirmations.
Senator Kent.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you're saying, and we -- and I'm, again, I'm confused, because in this special session, we only have three committees operating, Finance, Rules, and Bonding, yes. So, how will this work? How will we work with the Senate? How are you going to communicate with members to let us know how we do our work? Because this is a surprise, based on what we were told at 3:00 in the morning yesterday, that there is this plan.
Senator Benson.
Mr. President and Senator Kent, I don't think Senator Gazelka indicated that we'd be adjourning, signing die in short order or taking that action today. We're going to take the weekend and evaluate, and we'll come back on Tuesday in compliance with the every-three-days meeting.
Senator Kent.
Thank you, Mr. President. The concern I have is this is a holiday weekend. Yes, we can come back on Tuesday morning, but without notice, I don't, I'm unclear on how this -- so if, if we are going to proceed in a way that is transparent and consistent with the spirit of the Senate and the way we try to do business in this body, there needs to be clear communication. We were told one thing at 3:00 a.m. yesterday, that this was about the tax bill and possibly a bonding bill, both of which are no longer an issue, because the House is adjourned and the tax bill has been signed. Now we're hearing there's another thing, it's Friday morning, it's a holiday weekend, if members need to be here on Tuesday, we need to have clear communication, and we -- and if it's, if it's going to take time to do this, that is the Senate staying in special session for an extended period of time, and keeping all of these people in a session footing is not a simple matter. So, I just believe that the people of Minnesota and the members of this body need to have some more straightforward communication about what we're doing here and why we think it's important. I think many of us, I think most Minnesotans, think that a two-and-a-half-week special session to wrap up the budget was excessive, and now the Senate is saying, okay, we're going to stay open for another week, or otherwise, if we're not staying open for another week, we're going to, we're gonna, we're gonna just rush something through without communication with the members and with the public. So, I'm very confused as to what the, what the plan is here.
Senator Benson.
Mr. President and Senator Kent, as you know, committees are still allowed to meet and have informational hearings, and we will be in further communication as to specific floor action. If we have slipped on that before, we will try to be more clear and give sufficient notice for your members so that they can participate in the process.
Senator Papas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will Senator Benson yield?
Senator Benson will yield. Senator Papas.
Thank you. Senator Benson, I think it's important that we have a little more transparency here about what's going on. I mean, clearly, we finished the budget with kind of bipartisan support in both the House and the Senate. The House adjourned, signed die. Why is the Senate still here? And you've alluded vaguely to the Senate has some responsibilities, you know, what is, I just think you should be clear about what's going on with your caucus. Is there some vendetta here against the governor's commissioners, that you want to fire some of them? At this point, when we've just passed the budget and people have a lot of work to do to implement what the legislature has asked them to do, and, and now you're going to fire some who are at the helm, who have worked hard during COVID to do the job that they were hired to do. Who is it that you're upset with, and what do you plan to do? I think you should just put your cards on the table. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Benson.
I object to the characterization of Senate oversight as a vendetta.
Members will not try to impugn motive. Senator Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am grateful to be back in the chamber for the continuation of what sounds like an indefinite special session, and again, gonna call out my newness to this body. And, and so, have, have noticed in my tenure in politics, but especially this year, the inescapable ranker between members of this body, or the, particularly the majority leader, and the executive, Governor Walz, and it, it just is impossible not to notice it in the ways in which we're doing the work. That is not necessarily an issue for the entire Republican caucus, and certainly not an issue that I have with Senator Benson, but I do wonder at what point we release the Senate from a debate that seems more focused on the politics between two leaders here in the state of Minnesota. And so, Mr. President, I'm wondering if Senator Benson would yield for one more question.
Senator Benson will yield.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Senator Benson, I sure wish I could turn around and look at you. I, I am wondering if you could elaborate at all for me and for the members who are paying attention, and of course, for the public, which appointments may be under scrutiny, what we could anticipate in the Rules Committee or in other hearings, and, you know, it would be helpful, I think, for me and for the public if you could help us understand a little bit more which commissioners or which appointments are, are going to go under the microscope, if you will. I do recall what appeared to be a politically motivated, maybe not politically motivated, but it felt disproportionately political, the removal of commissioners a year ago. And given the rancorous relationship that appears so evident to me, I'm just wondering if you could help us understand better what to expect in terms of appointments and specific commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Senator Murphy. The commissioners who were removed previously, there was a meeting between the governor, there was clear communication from the chairs to those commissioners before the Senate took action. There was sufficient time for corrective action, and so that is the structure that the Senate has established. I do know, well, I, it has been conveyed to me that Senator Gazelka and the governor have spoken about appointments, and that is a unique role for the Senate, and so we will take those under consideration as is deemed prudent and necessary.
Senator Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President, and if Senator Benson would yield for one more question.
Senator Benson will yield.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Senator Benson. Can you share with me and for the members that are here and the members who are, of course, present virtually, what to expect in terms of a timeline? Is this not-so-special special session intended to wrap next week, or should be prepared to be in this not-so-special special session for an indeterminate amount of time?
Mr. President. Senator Murphy, I understand that there have been appointments sent to committees, and it would be appropriate for those committees to have informational hearings to review those, and so the timing will be based on informational reviews.
Senator Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Senator Benson. That sounds like the answer is an indeterminate amount of time. I am wondering, in the tribunal, as they say, of negotiations, or maybe this is just a negotiation between the majority leader here and the Speaker in the House, that maybe the Republican caucus has decided that we should be a year-round legislature. I know that many, not me, because I was not here, have been now meeting for about 18 months. I love this work, it's important, but this is really not the way that the founders of the Minnesota Constitution, who designed this legislature, intended it to be. I appreciate that we are ending the emergency powers and the scrutiny that goes along with that, but I don't believe that that requires an indeterminate special session, and do wonder if the, the politics today are driving that decision more than the role of the legislative body as we proceed in the ways in which we lead for the state of Minnesota. I'm concerned about the precedent here, I'm concerned about the ongoing duration of the work of this body, and particularly for the people who work here. And so, Senator Benson, you know, I appreciate that the clarity that you have is not enough so that you can answer my questions, but do ask that you convey to your leadership and to your leadership team, of which I know you are a part, that there should be a clear ending to this work of this legislature unless it is the intention of the Republican caucus to move us to a year-round, full-time legislature, and if that's the case, then I think it's important that you're clear about that as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Benson.
Mr. President, the governor determines when we come into special session, and the legislative body determines when we leave. There is no movement to a year-round legislature, but given the lateness of the hour, that the budget was wrapped up, and the appointments that have now been received, to take rapid action without contemplation would be irresponsible. And so, we will not be here year-round. That is not the mission of a citizen-led Republican majority in the Senate.
Senator Papas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize to the body for the use of the word "vendetta," perhaps I'll say "issues." Does the Majority Caucus have issues with certain commissioners? I know Senator Benson didn't answer my question about, are there particular commissioners that perhaps you wish to scrutinize? So, my first question is, are there particular commissioners that have not been confirmed yet that you wish to have informational hearings on during this extended special session? And my second question is, why weren't these hearings held during the regular session? I know in my case, my committee judiciary had plenty of time when we weren't hearing other important bills that we could have done confirmations. So, the first question is, who are they? And the second question is, why weren't these held during the regular session?
Are you asking Senator Benson to yield?
Yes, Senator President, will Senator Benson yield to those questions?
Senator Benson will yield. Senator Benson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Papas, I will not convey private conversations that I have had with chairs, that is not appropriate, but our caucus has been public about some concerns about policymaking, and so I will not go beyond that. It is the purview of each chair to decide how they approach confirmations, and as to, so I will not be specific about which chairs are contemplating confirmation, and there are appointments beyond confirmations that may be considered. And I apologize, Mr. President. Senator Papas, could you remind me the second portion of your question?
Senator Papas.
Sorry, Mr. President, I know we're all a little fuzzy here from the last couple nights when we didn't get enough sleep. Really, my, it was less of a question than of a comment, Senator Benson, so that's fine, about, there was plenty of time during the regular session to have confirmation hearings, and I don't think it's appropriate to now, now put us into an extended special session in order to have informational hearings. Informational hearings don't need a special session. Chairs can have informational hearings at their will throughout the year, so there is no reason to keep us in special session for informational hearings. So, obviously, there, there must be another motive here, which is to fire some of the governor's commissioners.
Senator Kent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I, I don't know that this has clarified much, other than there's not a lot of clarity, and this could go on indefinitely, which I think is problematic, just by way of comment. Most of the commissioners that would still need confirmation at this point have been on the job for nearly three years. We had a day off last Wednesday, we could have done hearings if we wanted to do that then. There's been plenty of time in nearly three years since these commissioners have been on the job that we could have taken up hearings in committee officially, not working groups, not informational hearings, and we could have taken that up on the floor at any number of times, but I will leave that to the people of Minnesota to determine what motive there might be for that. Mr. President, I move that we adjourn, signee die.
Mr. President, I request a roll call. I impose a call of the Senate.
The motion is to adjourn, signee die. Senator Benson has requested a call of the Senate, the Senate is under call. Senator Benson, I've been told that we cannot execute a roll call under remote voting, so is your motion back to requesting a roll call?
Mr. President, I will lift my request for a call of the Senate and renew my request for a roll call on this motion.
The motion is to adjourn, signee die. Roll call's been requested, roll call's been granted. The clerk will take the role. The clerk will take the roll. Senator Kent. You'll report the votes of those voting under Rule 40.7?
Mr. President, Senator Bigum votes aye.
Senator Bigum votes aye.
Senator Carlson votes aye.
Senator Carlson votes aye.
Senator Champion votes aye.
Senator Champion votes aye.
Senator Clausen votes aye.
Senator Clausen votes aye.
Senator Swedzinski votes aye.
Senator Swedzinski votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dibble votes aye.
Senator Dietzick votes aye.
Senator Dietzick votes aye.
Senator Eaton votes aye.
Senator Eaton votes aye.
Senator Ekin votes aye.
Senator Ekin votes aye.
Senator Fattay votes aye.
Senator Fattay votes aye.
Senator Franzen votes aye.
Senator Franzen votes aye.
Senator Frantz votes aye.
Senator Frantz votes aye.
Senator Herr votes aye.
Senator Herr votes aye.
Senator Isaacson votes aye.
Senator Isaacson votes aye.
Senator Koenisch votes aye.
Senator Koenisch votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator McEwen votes aye.
Senator Newton votes aye.
Senator Newton votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Port votes aye.
Senator Putnam votes aye.
Senator Putnam votes aye.
Senator Rest votes aye.
Senator Rest votes aye.
Senator Torres-Rae votes aye.
Senator Torres-Rae votes aye.
Senator Uyghur votes aye.
Senator Uyghur votes aye.
Senator Wickland votes aye.
Senator Wickland votes aye. Senator Benson, will you report the votes of those members voting under Rule 40.7?
Mr. President, Senator Abler votes no.
Senator Abler votes no.
Senator Anderson votes no.
Senator Anderson votes no.
Senator Bach votes no.
Senator Bach votes no.
Senator Chamberlain votes no.
Senator Chamberlain votes no.
Senator Coleman votes no.
Senator Coleman votes no.
Senator Dames votes no.
Senator Dames votes no.
Senator Dorick votes no.
Senator Dorick votes no.
Senator Dreheim votes no.
Senator Dreheim votes no.
Senator Duckworth votes no.
Senator Duckworth votes no.
Senator Ikorn votes no.
Senator Ikorn votes no.
Senator Giseleka votes no.
Senator Giseleka votes no.
Senator Goggan votes no.
Senator Goggan votes no.
Senator Housley votes no.
Senator Housley votes no.
Senator Howe votes no.
Senator Howe votes no.
Senator Ingberretson votes no.
Senator Ingberretson votes no.
Senator Jazinski votes no.
Senator Jazinski votes no.
Senator Johnson votes no.
Senator Johnson votes no.
Senator Kiffmeyer votes no.
Senator Kiffmeyer votes no.
Senator Coran votes no.
Senator Coran votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
Senator Lang votes no.
Senator Limer votes no.
Senator Limer votes no.
Senator Matthews votes no.
Senator Matthews votes no.
Senator Miller votes no.
Senator Miller votes no.
Senator Nelson votes no.
Senator Nelson votes no.
Senator Osmik votes no.
Senator Osmik votes no.
Senator Rarick votes no.
Senator Rarick votes no.
Senator Rosen votes no.
Senator Rosen votes no.
Senator Rude votes no.
Senator Rude votes no.
Senator Senjam votes no.
Senator Senjam votes no.
Senator Tomasoni votes no.
Senator Tomasoni votes no.
Senator Utke votes no.
Senator Utke votes no.
Senator Weber votes no.
Senator Weber votes no.
And Senator Westrom votes no.
Senator Westrom votes no. Senator Kent.
Mr. President, thank you. Senator Latz votes no.
Senator Latz votes no.
I'm sorry, aye.
Senator Latz votes yes.
Senator Marty votes aye.
Senator Marty votes aye. With all those members have voted with the desire to vote, the clerk will close the roll. There being 29 ayes and 35 nays, the motion does not prevail. Senator Benson.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate do now adjourn to Tuesday, July 6th, at 10:00 a.m.
The Senate stands adjourned until Tuesday. Oh, with a vote. The motion is the Senate will adjourn until Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. The Senate is adjourned.